I would like to reopen the Village of Bronxville's Board of Trustees meeting for February 10, 2025, and ask all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Starting with the mayor's report, and I think most of my report is going to be shared or mixed with the trustees who have all been involved all this month on various things, but I'd like to start the Eastchester Community Action Program, which is based in Tuckahoe. Our own reformed church offered their space for their annual Martin Luther King breakfast, which was incredible, and the Bronxville Rotary stepped in and paid for the cost of all of the food. So the breakfast was almost, all the money raised is going to go back to children and seniors, mostly in Tuckahoe, in need of homework help, after-school activities, food, et cetera. I just wanted to thank those two institutions in the village who just totally stepped up. And I think trustee Fredericks, I'm going to have you talk about, so many of us attended the historical conservancy benefit, and we were basically there to say thank you for all they've done in partnership with the village. After I speak, trustee Fredericks will mention some of the initiatives we're working on. Had a wonderful chamber meeting. The chamber thanks, I just think it's extraordinary, the chamber has 60 new members, which was wonderful, it was a terrific chamber meeting, and trustee Knapp, you'll speak to that. Just wanted to talk about, oh, my favorite, well, it wasn't fun because it was hard, the Bronxville High School, I was interviewed on their television show, and they asked me some tough questions, and then I said, they said, what's something so interesting about you no one knows? And I came up with, I do needlepoint. And I went home feeling like quite a loser. So I may as to go back.
Yeah, make up something more interesting.
I had nothing. And just, I'm thrilled at all the work on our islands all around the village. I mentioned in my column, someone just asked me what other street I was ripping up tomorrow. But people seem happy, and the one question we get asked, I get asked, is about the striping. Yes, we're going to stripe all the crosswalks, you just can't do it in the middle of the winter season. And we have those nice impermeable surfaces where we're going to collaborate with the garden clubs to do planting, and I know the Green Committee is happy that we're turning concrete into soil. So anyway, that, you know, that's just a wonderful, wonderful project, I think. And then a big thank you to the DPW for their work Saturday night. I actually was out in the storm, and I won't say where I was coming from, but the minute I got to Bronxville, the streets, the plows were out, the streets were clean. They do an amazing job, so thanks to the gentleman of the DPW. And just on a very somber note, I'd like to mention the passing of our incredible resident, John Preising, 95 years young. He was on our Ethics Committee, adored the village, went to every sporting event, was just somebody who gave and gave to this community. So he will be so very missed, so a little thought to one of our finest residents, John Preising. And then I think I'll just go to maybe Bill. Bill, would you like to talk about some of the initiatives you've undertaken?
Sure. Well, as the mayor mentioned, the Bronxville Historical Conservancy had its annual meeting last month. Jim Palmer, the mayor, and I represented the village. I think it's fair to say that Jim Palmer could get his own fan club started from members of the Historical Conservancy.
Yes.
Who really, genuinely, I think, enjoy working with you, Jim, on various public-private partnerships. Of interest to the Conservancy and to the village for some time has been completing Phase Two of a project that was started some years ago to renovate and refurbish the village's historic street signs. The Historical Conservancy, some years ago, paid the substantial costs of recreating mold that is used to create the decorative Bronxville street signs that we see throughout the village. Village Administrator Palmer has done inquiry and has confirmed that the company still has those molds, and so we're in a position to potentially order up an additional group of replacements, and I think to, over time, replace defective signs, install some signs where some signs have been lost, or maybe where they've never been, but people in the community may want their own Bronxville sign. I think everyone who lives on the street in Bronxville should have the opportunity to point to one of these historic signs if they want to. And we are hopeful that the Historical Conservancy will partner with the village to subsidize some of the very significant costs that will be involved in that, but, you know, the street signs, I think, are really a cherished and much identifiable part of the village. It would be nice to close the chapter on Part Two of that project. So I think we'll be working together with the Conservancy on that, and we'll keep the community posted as that goes forward.
Okay. All righty, then trustee Barron.
Sure. Thank you, mayor. The mayor and I had a chance to do our annual meeting with the hospital last week. We met with Paul Dumphy, who is the COO, and Tim Hughes, the VP of Operations. As you know, the hospital is just a main and integral part of our community, and we have a close working relationship with them. They've got a lot of exciting things going on, such as the new state-of-the-art labor and delivery. We had a chance to view that unit. It opened in January. It features six large, private, family-friendly labor-delivery suites, which is really exciting, so we can finally compete against Greenwich Hospital, which a lot of our residents go up to. They also have two state-of-the-art, new operating rooms for Caesarian deliveries. And by way of reference, NYPD Westchester delivered 1,200 babies last year. So it's a very big practice for them, and something that they really want to get right, and I think this new unit is a long way to get there. The lobby, if you've been in the hospital lately, the lobby is under construction, and it's going to get worse, but it's going to be completed, hopefully, within the year, you know, this time next year. They're trying to create a new spacious, open-air, state-of-the-art-technology lobby. As you know, it's not a great lobby now, and they really want to put, they've gotten a large gift for it, and they're really starting that project, so we look forward to that. They've also talked about their new aux spine group program, which is basically minimal, invasive, and complex surgeries for the back and neck, and it's actually a Bronxville doctor who's spearheading it. He's a Columbia doctor, and they're going to be aligned with Columbia Medical on that, as all their, now they can see patients in Bronxville, and you don't have to go down to 168th Street. They're also, they're working on a new step-down unit, which is basically when you go from ICU down to, it used to be acute care, but now they're called step-down units, to have places where you can go to get good care before you get to go home. And they're doing a bunch of new units there, and it's going to be completed, hopefully, a year from now. They are also exploring the addition of a third cardiac cath lab due to the high volume. They put two in there now. They had one, they put two, and now they are thinking of doing three because they're doing such a big volume, and it allows patients, residents in the community, to be able to treat it for heart attacks and other things in a real timely basis, rather than have to go to another hospital. They've also recruited a ton of really high-quality doctors, most of them, all of them Columbia physicians, and a lot in pediatric care. There are also plans underway for a new emergency department expansion. They've talked about it for a long time, where hopefully this is going to happen this time. And, I mean, they've done expansions to it and upgrades, but this is a continuation of that. And they're also going to do an expanded pediatric wing of the ER/ED, so the children and the teens can be in a separate space. Right now, they're co-mingled with adults, and it's not the best environment for them. They also mentioned that they're launching a $20 million capital campaign, and they're to support not only the emergency room expansion, the pediatric emergency room expansion, but other vital projects. And they reminded that all money raised here with their campaign stays at the Bronxville campus. And they also were grateful for the relationship they have with the village and the community, and they look forward to, you know, continuing to thrive in our community. So that was on the hospital. Did you want me to speak on the website, mayor?
On the hospital, did they, thank you for that, and the improvements they made are remarkable. Was there any discussion of what the plans are for Palmer Hall?
They are not, they're not definitive yet.
Okay.
They know they want to do something with Palmer Hall. Palmer Hall is that, you know, very beautiful brick building where the administrative offices are. They could utilize it for other things, such as, you know, physician offices, or, you know, different patient stuff, and move the administrative work elsewhere, but they just, they haven't quite figured it out.
Right, thank you.
But they know they need to keep it as a historic building on the outside and just revamp the inside. On another topic, would you like me to talk about the website?
Sure, absolutely.
So the village has launched a new and improved website, which we're all very, very excited about. Our lovely secretary over there, Mary Ann, who's scribbling away, she didn't want to be mentioned, has worked hard to upgrade, to work on this important project. It's much easier to navigate, and it's much easier, much easier to search for things on the website. It's broken down on the top into government, business, community, and I want to. And then the upcoming events and calendar section is now much more accessible and easier to navigate. And then there's also subboxes now on birthday and death records, property taxes, parking, online services, signing up for alerts, and village code and agenda and minutes. There's additional highlights also below the calendar that you can link to, to the Bronxville School, find out about the Justice Court, sign up for our newsletter that we send out once a month, obviously the Bronxville Public Library, which is near and dear to everyone's heart, their website, the mayor's weekly columns are listed in there, and the recreation, tennis, paddle, and pickleball pages. There's also quick links at the bottom for emergency alert system, foil requests, and report a problem. So we think it's really easy to find. We would really love residents to look at the website, give us feedback in real time if things don't work right, because, you know, it's still evolving. We spent a lot of time on it today, just trying to make sure every link works and every thing is. But if it's not, if it's not obvious to you as a resident, then we want to make it better, so please, please send us feedback if we can make it better.
Can I ask, Mary, how integrated is the calendar in terms of village events and dates, but also community? Is it, you know, chamber events?
No, it's just village events.
Is it just village hall events?
Yes, village hall events.
Is there a possibility that we, it can be expanded to a kind of a wider?
Isn't that what the hope was, I think? That's how I...
That would be our next...
That would be fantastic, really. We were talking about that at the Chamber of Commerce, you know, with events that are going on in the downtown and community organizations, if there's sort of a central calendar.
Okay, right now, we're really focused just on the village, you know, our meetings, the planning board meetings, the, you know, we have a link to the Green Committee, we have a link to the library, so their websites are obviously kept up by them and the Bronxville Schools, but, so we wouldn't put on, you know, school activities.
No, no, no. Yeah, we'd have to kind of sort through what exactly would be eligible, but, yeah.
Right. Well, you could have links, like you all link to the library website for their calendar.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's all for the mayor.
And deputy mayor, our financial guru here, how we doing?
Well, fine, but before I get going, I would like to comment on what you mentioned, the loss of John Preising. He was truly a bright light in this community. He was an exemplar to everyone around him about making, about giving back to the community and the community on a larger scale, whether it's Westchester County or Bronxville. And he, when the first time we met, 31 years ago, he was just a major, just when I had moved into Bronxville, and he was such a major influence in encouraging me to think more broadly about how one lives life. So he was just, as you said, a real huge, bright light in this community, and his presence will be dearly missed. So financially, we're doing very well. We have, thank you to Lori and Jim Palmer. We are in a very enviable financial position. We have, Moody's has given us for many years a AAA rating for our debt, which is a great benefit in allowing us to issue debt at a lower cost than other communities that might have a lower bond rating. That's also backed by the fact that we have very prudent fiscal management, and we also have a taxable base within the village of a little, slightly over $3 billion, so we have a substantial base to tax upon for issuing property taxes. And then we have a history of being conservative in developing what's called a fund balance, which is essentially retained earnings within a municipal context, and our fund balance has typically been, you know, around a little bit north of 40% of one year's annual budget. So this gives us the ability to, in difficult years like we had in the great financial crisis, when people are, you know, things are difficult from a financial perspective, we're able to kind of dip into the fund balance and use more to balance the budget, and in some years, we have surplus that can go and add to that fund balance. So we're in a very enviable position there, and this board, my colleagues, and the mayor have been very focused on developing a policy for addressing the fund balance, to make sure that this is being done within a very responsible manner, so not getting too big and not getting too small. I'd also like to just touch quickly upon the police department. We have had two recent hires, which probably see them on the street, two spectacular new women have joined our force from New York City. Samantha Pena, who is, I think her native language is Spanish, so she's completely bilingual, has tremendous experience within the New York City schools. And then we also have Sydney Newbury, also from NYPD. So we're, so when you see them, make sure you stop them and tell them how lucky we are to have them in the village. With that, we have had one recent departure. We are still a little bit short of our desired staffing level, and, you know, I want to express the appreciation to Chief Satrioli and Lieutenant DeYoung and his colleagues for the massive vetting process they've gone through in finding these candidates.
And they're coming to the March meeting, is that the...
Yes, they'll be coming, Samantha and Sydney will be coming to the March meeting to be officially sworn in, or ceremoniously sworn in. They're officially part of the force, but this will be just to do that ceremoniously.
And with their families.
Which is always one of the great events for us, to have this room filled with our officers, and then to have the families of these people around to see how proud they are and how proud we are of them, and that's one of the great evenings of the year for me.
I think it's always our best-attended meeting, to see all the family members and kids.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. And I think it's important to know, you know, thanks to a lot of your work, too, when you say AAA bond rating, there's 45 communities in Westchester, and it's only Bronxville, Scarsdale, and Larchmont, too, who have this bond rating, so it's, and it's made a huge difference in our borrowing over the years, so we're very mindful of keeping that bond rating. Trustee Knapp, I kept you last, perhaps the best for last, because I'd love you to segue into anything you'd like to say, and then introduce our two guests this evening.
Okay.
Mayor, let me just add two things, so that that way we preserve the segue, that we have our cleanup hitter staying in the cleanup position. Just two other quick things to add. Village Administrator Palmer and I had another meeting, I guess it's three weeks ago, with AJ and Paul Pelosi about flooding issues. I won't belabor the point, I think all of us on the board are very familiar with the flooding issues that we're trying to deal with, and all I can say to folks who are in affected areas, we share a lot of your frustration, and that sometimes things have gone more slowly than we've wanted. We've had to work with our neighbors and friends in Mount Vernon and in Eastchester, and sometimes it's just not as feasible to work at the same rate when you have to work with partners and bring them along. But I imagine, Jim, you probably have probably 10 phone calls a week on flooding issues, and it's something that all of us remain very much involved in. And then I just wanted to briefly mention, maybe this is a transition to Helen and the Green Committee. There has been some thought in quite a few quarters of the village for some time that the village is losing its tree canopy. Tree issues are multifaceted, they have many components. There is a proposal that, you know, I think the board as a whole is going to work on, I've tried to put together a draft and get some discussions started, got some very helpful comments from Ellen Edwards, chairman of the Green Committee, who is here tonight, from Jack Beerworth, who's sort of the tree person at the Historical Conservancy. And in a nutshell, I am hopeful that we'll be able to put together a proposal, get a public-private partnership to get more funding in the village for the planting of trees, both on the village's own property and where neighbors and residents would like it, to subsidize the planting of trees in the village's right-of-way in certain areas where right-of-way trees have lost. Not a government mandated, you must plant a tree here, but to create options and hopefully some enthusiasm across the village. We were talking about our work session, you know, deputy mayor Helen, you know, there's more work to do on that, but I think this is part of an initiative on environmental issues that, you know, I think the whole board has been focused on in recent years, and hopefully will continue to come up with good ideas for the benefit of the community, and again, with the extremely helpful input of, you know, I see the three ladies from the Green Committee, we all stayed in awe of you, but, you know, we'll be looking for your help again on this one, and with that, I'll pass to trustee Knapp.
Okay, thank you. Well, just before getting into the presentations, I do want to allude back to the mayor's comments about the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Several of us attended last week at one of our newest food, coffee vendors, Coffee Unique, which was a really great new coffee place. If everybody's been to it, they have really great coffee and food.
Where is it?
It's on Pond Field, like 69, I think, so it's right in the middle of the block there. Yeah, really nice. And so, you know, just the, a great recap of all the wonderful things that the chamber has done in the last year. The mayor already said 60 new members, 66? Wow, every day, there's new ones coming up, you know, thanks to Leslie Corcoran as Executive Director and Vanessa O'Friel as President. You know, you all, such energetic leadership with all the new events, with Erin, and I think everybody saw her running around the village as the elf on the shelf. I shouldn't say that.
Uh-oh.
Okay, fans are listening.
Yes.
Take that, edit that part out.
You've destroyed Christmas.
Oh, gosh. Terrible Grinch. Anyway, but there will be, I think, Easter bunnies, a bunny or two, coming down the path for the season that's coming, and, you know, more great events, and, you know, as the mayor always says, the vibrancy of our downtown is so critical to this village's cohesion and making it a walkable downtown, and having lots of stores that generate business, and that we all shop locally, helps reduce our taxes, so it's this great circle of life, really, keeping things going strong. So any other part about the Chamber of Commerce? Thank you. Vanessa, 66 is a great number. So with that, I'll just head into the next presentations. First, our library board. We're so thrilled to have representatives of our library board giving us an update on all the wonderful initiatives that you all have been doing as you're heading into your budget season and your strategic planning. So we have Christina Kretikos, the chair of the library board, I see Josh Rucci there, another board member, Amy Brown, you're on Friends, the president of the Friends, so you guys got a great team here. So do you just want to come up and share, you know, some of your highlights and what you guys are working on?
Thank you very much, Helen. So as mentioned, I'm Christina Kretikos, I'm currently president of the Board of Trustees of the library, and I'm here with Josh Rucci, who's our board member, and Amy Brown, president of the Friends. And I thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight and the community. So I'm going to start with a riddle. What's the tallest building? Anyone can guess, these guys don't know it either. The tallest building.
The Burj Khalifa.
No, but you fell right into my trap.
Good.
I'll give you a hint. What am I here to talk to you about tonight?
The library.
The library. So what is the tallest building?
The library.
The library, because it has a lot of stories.
We may have you sit down.
Yeah, no, no, there's a theme here. So on the library board, we spend a lot of time planning, crunching numbers, and reviewing policies and procedures. But tonight, I'm here to share some stories with you, some really great stories about why the library is such an integral part of our village. My first story is about my daughter Penelope. She's eight years old, she's my youngest of four kids, and she has been going to the library since she was born. A few weeks ago, she had a playdate with her friend Ava after school, and I needed to pick up a book at the library. And as you know, one of the greatest features of our library is that it is right across the street from the school. So we go to the circulation desk, and Penelope pulls this out of her backpack. Looks familiar, right? So her friend Ava says, "Ooh, you have a library gift card." And my daughter says, "No, it's a library card, and you can get one, too. It's free." I can't make this up, this is an actual conversation. Penelope has been carrying about around her library card in her backpacks since kindergarten. Why? A library card is power. It's the only place in life she can go and get whatever she wants, and I can't say no, because it's free. Books are knowledge, knowledge is power, and power is free at the library. You can't beat that as an eight-year-old, and you can't beat that as an adult either. The past two years, as a board, we have focused the majority of our efforts on the reading garden, so that patrons can spend more time outdoors. This summer and fall, our vision was realized. Patrons were outside all day long, and our librarians had new outdoor programming. Programming for adults like flamingo painting class... for adults like flamingo painting class and outdoor qigong. For kids, there were outdoor arts and crafts projects like bird feeders and recycled sun catchers, and music classes like song and beat drumming and Back to Rock. When not there for programming, patrons are sitting outside, enjoying the weather, working on laptops, having a snack, and hanging out. When you walk or drive by the library, you see so many people enjoying this community space. It has been an invaluable addition to the library, and we thank you for supporting our vision from the very beginning. Improving our outdoor space was the driving focus of our strategic plan, and we are thrilled with the results and patron feedback. Looking forward on the planning front, we are currently reviewing our hours of operation. The library is closed Tuesday and Thursday mornings to the public, and we have great demand for our services during daytime hours. Demand that has grown even stronger since the reading garden opened. On Tuesday and Thursday mornings when the library is closed, patrons are sitting outside and waiting for the doors to open. This year, our goal is to increase access to library services, and we'll be looking at library hours as one of our highest priorities as we evaluate the budget. Going back to stories, I want to share with you some words, not just from me, but from fellow residents. One resident said, "The library is such an amazing resource for our community, from the obvious, like taking out books in Libby, to the less obvious, such as museum passes, events, programming for kids, and the teen center. I just love how our library is such a central part of our community, bringing in people of all ages and interests." Another resident said, "The library is an institution that brings together all of Bronxville, from old to young, sporty to creative. It provides programs and spaces available to everyone in a warm, welcoming environment. You can plan to and attend an event like an author talk with friends, or spontaneously run into somebody while they're at book checkout. For a quick pop-in to grab a book or movie, or an extended visit to read our work, the library is so convenient and comfortable." From another resident, "My husband and I love the nights that the library is open. It is a perfect place to go on a date night when you are a parent with young children. We love going out to dinner and then spending the evening in the quiet, comfortable setting of the library, reading our books." So back to my first story. I saw Ava at school pickup two weeks ago, and guess what she pulled out of her backpack? Her library card. Her mom found it for her at home, and she now keeps in her backpack, just like Penelope. Why? Because a library card is power. A library brings us stories and knowledge, and most of all, a library is about community. And Bronxville has the best community library. So thank you, as always, for your support of the library. I look forward to presenting to you again in April when we review the budget. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy Brown. She has just a couple of words for the Friends.
Thank you, Christina.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to say how grateful I am to have the opportunity to be the President of the Friends. It's such an honor to be able to be the one that facilitates the relationship between the village residents and the hard-working library trustees and the library staff. The programming that the Friends are able to fund and promote is extraordinary. We are at the benefit of having such fantastic librarians that reach out and acquire robust opportunities that are not just for children, or teens, or adults, but for everyone. We had the Yale Acapella Group that had over sixty people in attendance, and they were just wonderful. Had teenagers come to attend to be inspired, as well as myself. And I just wanted to take a moment to highlight two upcoming events that we have. In April, on April eighth, we have the New York Times bestselling author Fiona Davis returning for her newest book, The Stolen Queen, at seven PM. So look out for that event, bright, it'll be circulating soon. And then, of course, the Friends' other primary goal is fundraising. And we have our upcoming fundraiser party on April twenty-fifth. It's a night at the races, not to be missed. And those tickets will be released to the general public on the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Josh, nothing? Thank you. Thank you so much. Any questions about any...
Trustees, any questions? No, we just look forward to discussing everything with you as we are almost in the budget cycle. So, but thank you for coming, because you shared a lot with them. The library is such a great story to tell, that it's great to have you here. So, thank you.
And I think that date night really never crossed my mind, as I know. But, I don't know, there we go. Thank you so much. All right, so moving on, we're going to introduce members of our wonderful Green Committee. Bill already mentioned many things that are going on with our Green Committee. We have three of our, three Musketeers of everything green in the village, really. Carol Upsher is really here, kind of leading the charge of the presentation, to talk about the updated village municipal greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And I'll turn the stage over to her, but I just, as a few words of introduction on the efforts that have been going on, really, since February twenty-twenty-one, when the village joined the Climate Smart Communities program, to really document and undertake steps to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and kind of embark on more sustainable practices for this village and this community to really become more sustainable. And one of the first steps upon joining the Climate Smart Communities was to complete a report of greenhouse gas emissions from the village operations. So from the DPW, the library, Village Hall, vehicle emissions, lighting, using twenty-eighteen, right, as the benchmark. And so Carol is here really to report on the updated work that she's been doing, focusing on the most recent data, compiling a report to really document what the village has done and what improvements have been made from twenty-twenty-three, which is the latest data, looking back toward the original data of twenty-eighteen. And I won't steal your thunder, but the improvements have been remarkable and outstanding, really, as we move forward into a more green future. So please come up and introduce yourself in addition, and please mention your colleagues here, Ellen and Maria, who...
I will, thank you. So I'm Carol Upsher. I'm a member of the Green Committee, and I got the pleasure of being volunteering, just because I knew how to run numbers, to figure out, how do we do this greenhouse gas emissions stuff? And it's been a learning curve. But I also want to thank Ellen Edwards, together with Helen, who are the co-chairs of the Climate Smart Task Force. And we have a volunteer from the Green Committee, Akiko Koyubashi, who actually helped put together our employee commute survey data. And of course, Maria Tandere, I'm going to mispronounce your name, Tandere, who has done a lot of the outreach and community communications and planning around recycling, and of course, done a lot with school sustainability. So, did I forget anybody? No, okay. So, and I also just want to thank, in absentia, our former Assistant Village Administrator, who is a member of the task force, Stephen Shallow, and also Jim Palmer and Mayor Marvin, and all the trustees, really, for supporting this journey. So it really has been a journey, and it's been a short one, but it's been like we've been on a sprint for the last few years. So as Helen mentioned, in two thousand and twenty-one, we joined the New York State Climate Smart Communities Program, and also something called the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, which is now known as ICLE, Local Governments for Sustainability. And these programs encourage climate-related planning at the local level. With their guidance, the village completed the greenhouse gas inventory for municipal operations, and also one for community-wide emissions, which we haven't repeated yet, but that's on the agenda down the road. And based on these reports, the village began to plan actions to reduce municipal greenhouse gas emissions. And we also created a formal municipal climate action plan that was only adopted about a year ago, in November twenty-twenty-three. So in terms of updates, a lot of things have happened since, you know, just about twenty-twenty-two, when we first put together the reports, and I think the trustees really started thinking about, what can we do in response to this challenge about climate mitigation? The first big thing was the conversion of all the street lighting and other outdoor lights to efficient LED bulbs. And that's a real biggie, and I'll tell you why in a minute. Also initiation of residential and municipal office, food scrap programming, food scrap recycling, a book recycling program, and lots of other reuse and recycle programs, including Take Back Day, which we have twice a year, which reduces the municipal burden of transporting trash. And we also joined the State Clean Energy Communities Program, which assists our group with community electric vehicle and clean heating and cooling campaigns, and also resulted in the village being able to gain money towards promoting some of these climate actions that we are interested in undertaking. The village also simultaneously was doing a hazard mitigation plan update, comprehensive planning update, and obviously a lot of climate risk planning, especially around flooding. And all of those things have been happening in the last two or three years. We also completed a Level Two Building Operations Energy Audit, with recommendations for specific emissions savings improvements in our three main municipal buildings. Five dual-port electric charging stations for public use have been installed in the village, mostly in parking garages and public lots. And following the recommended protocol for climate planning, we have been looking at the data and using the data to monitor whether all these things have been producing something, improvements in emissions. And so that's what I'm going to talk about for a couple of minutes, you know, what we found. So as I said, as Helen said, our initial baseline year was two thousand and eighteen, and that wasn't really, it was kind of awkward, because we started working on this in two thousand and twenty-one. But there are reasons around, in the climate protocol environment and in the scientific environment, why you pick a prior baseline year and you see how, as opposed to starting right where you're at. So it was two thousand and eighteen. And so, but we've only been at this since the last couple of years. Once we found, got the data, the reports, we put together in two thousand and twenty-two. So we haven't had that much time. So even though our focused efforts to address greenhouse gas emissions have only ramped up in the last couple of years, although we've had geothermal in this building for a good long time, since two thousand and five, which was a great green initiative, what we found when we put these numbers together is we've already reduced municipal admissions by a hundred and thirty megatons of carbon between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-three. That's almost nineteen percent reduction. If you're following along on the PowerPoint I handed out, where did we save the energy? Well, the biggest area was the streetlights. We went from over six hundred and sixty-six thousand kilowatt-hours annually in two thousand and eighteen to a hundred and seventy-two thousand in two thousand and twenty-three. That's a seventy-four percent reduction in electric use for our streetlights. And overall, when you look at overall, we had some other economies, especially in the new DPW building, our overall village consumption of electricity went from over a million kilowatt-hours a year in two thousand and eighteen to just five hundred and sixty thousand in two thousand and twenty-three. Almost half, forty-eight percent reduction. So that's pretty amazing, and that all represents emissions that are not going into the, into the climate. The other area where we had improvements was in the way employees are commuting to work. There are about a hundred employees altogether, sixty full-time, forty part-time, and through a voluntary anonymous survey, we asked them, how far do they live from work, how many miles it is, what kind of vehicle they use, the miles per gallon, and if they use other, you know, how do they get to work? Do they use the B-line or Metro North and so forth? And what we found is between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-three, employees are reporting fewer commuting miles. So in other words, they don't live as far away from Bronxville, and that saved about twenty-six thousand miles of commuting a year, which saved about two thousand gallons of gasoline. Also, some additional employees reported in twenty-twenty-three, who hadn't reported in twenty-eighteen, that they used solely public transportation to get to work, or walking. And about a third of the commuter said they were using hybrid vehicles. So all those things together actually resulted in a reduction of ten megatons of greenhouse gas emissions from the employee workforce commuting during the year. This time, we also asked them, like a little opinion survey of the staff, and we asked them, you know, what were they thinking about in terms of future ways to green their commute? What were their opinions about public transportation? What were the barriers? What did they feel about electric vehicles and so forth? And what we found is that, and there's a chart that you have, that employees are reporting that they're considering buying smaller vehicles, hybrid or electric vehicles. Some of them are thinking about walking more, or moving closer to work. And about thirty-one percent said they would be very interested, or somewhat interested, in if the village was able to offer pre-tax payroll program for public transportation passes. That's a very important program that's been around for quite a few years with employers to encourage public transportation use. And, you know, no one's forced to do it, but if someone wants to use it, it provides them a little bit of a tax break by buying passes. So it's something that we've talked a little bit about, and we'll see how it might, might work here. So that was the other area where there was carbon reduction. Right now, though, good news, the actions in process are going to get us another hundred, more than a hundred megaton carbon reduction. And that's because the village has started to implement an extensive array of building energy efficiencies, recommended in the energy audit that we had of the library, Village Hall, and DPW. And this energy audit and some of these actions have also garnered us already close to eighty thousand dollars worth of clean energy community state funds, and we're waiting to hear about another hundred and twenty-five thousand, keeping our fingers crossed it comes through. So what those programs are doing are converting the lighting to LEDs in the buildings, which will obviously save, we've already seen from our street lighting. Transitioning from heating oil to natural gas, which was not necessarily planned, but it's happening, and will also give us emissions reductions, since heating oil is much dirtier than natural gas. Installing energy management systems in all the buildings, which optimize heating and cooling and lighting and water and everything, can save another fifteen percent or twenty percent of the energy costs of buildings. And then the final one, that's a big one, is planning for a solar installation on the DPW building. We've gotten some preliminary proposals that show that that building could generate a hundred and fifty thousand kilowatt-hours a year or more, which will cover most of the electric consumption of both the DPW building and Village Hall. So that would be another huge, really positive. And together, those will save us another hundred And together, those will save us another 100 megatons of carbon. So we've been busy, and part of what we're also obligated to do within the framework is to, with our climate action plan every year, look at what we accomplished. So I just went through and created a scorecard for us, and we actually had 26 actions on that plan for 2024. Yeah, that was a lot. But we achieved more than 70% of them, completely or partially. And there are a few we didn't get to, but it's not because we didn't think about them, you know, we're waiting for things to line up and so forth. So that's a huge achievement. We are really working through the planning that we started. And then we have also looked at priorities for 2025. So certainly completing all these energy conversions will be very important, because then we'll get those reduction, reductions that we're seeking. Completing and designing and bidding out, hopefully, the DPW solar project, probably may be a miracle if we could even start it by the end of the year, but that would be great. Another thing on our list is engaging the town of Eastchester in discussions about energy use at the firehouse, because that's on our property, basically, and just finding out what they're thinking of or planning. We did include data from the firehouse in our original report. Working with the county and other municipalities about how to resolve all the barriers for purchasing hybrid or electric vehicles for the fleet, that's been a big conundrum, and, you know, the vehicles are delayed and so forth, but those will help us continue to reduce emissions. Working on a tree ordinance and fostering, maintaining the village tree canopy, which trustee Fredericks has brought up, and maybe establishing a public-private partnership for that. Continuing to promote and expand ways to do recycling and reuse programs, continuing to look ways, to look for ways for energy-efficient and sustainable village purchasing, equipment management, management of open space. A lot of things have already been done, but always in the back of our mind. And then to initiate a process to engage key Bronxville institutions, businesses and residents in community-wide climate planning. We know the hospital is a big energy user in the village. We have other, you know, the school, Iona, and then, you know, churches, co-ops, you know, so lots of communities have done community-wide plans, and we're trying to thoughtfully get there over the next year or so by talking to major institutions and finding out, you know, what they're doing in terms of cleaning up the environment. So that's my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And congratulations to us. We've done a real, oh, there's one more slide. So we actually will be at 35% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions if we get all those energy management systems in the buildings and the solar done by, let's say, 2027. So the New York State Climate Action Law suggests that municipalities get to 40% reduction by 2030, and we will already probably be around 35% reduction by 2027. We only have 5% to go then, to get to 2030, and we're hoping then, by that point, we can figure out how to get some electric vehicles into the fleet and so forth and serve, you know, kind of manage to chip away at that last 5%. And also through these other measures, you know, multiple smaller measures that are there in place. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Extraordinary. Those numbers when you first shared the other day, yes. When we sat with you at a preliminary meeting, that was just stunningly wonderful. So thank you to the whole team, and welcome to the new member that we didn't know. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Carol, one of the, you know, the great job, but one of the things you've left out of this is this great reduction in carbon emissions, but it's also been a tremendous, it's made so much sense fiscally for the village.
Exactly.
And so that's a really critical point that needs to be emphasized here, that this is not just doing good for the environment, which is critical, but at the same time, it makes tremendous financial sense.
I think some people don't realize those things don't necessarily go hand-in-hand all the time, but I think that the way you all have focused on these very concrete improvements at, you know, at a cost that is, makes fiscal sense and has brought money in.
Right.
Through these grant programs. I mean, it's just a win-win all around.
Right, and like the solar project, you know, it's been so hard to figure out how to do that, but then when we get the numbers and see it's going to generate so much electricity, it's going to be basically free to the village and save the village, you know, $10,000, $15,000 a year, you know, it is, it is amazing.
It's really exciting.
Carol, I had two questions. First of all, I noticed that your report to the board was only 24 single-spaced pages with illustrations and charts, so, you know, I was sort of expecting a 30-page report, you know, from prior precedent, but anyway, I did have one question for you right off the bat. In emissions from buildings and facilities, the report says that that actually increased by 5% between 2018 and 2023.
Right.
We've had these great savings in other areas. I just wonder whether you could sort of comment as to why that's gone up? And, you know, your reference to sort of energy management systems and whatnot, I mean, do you think that's sort of the next area for a big focus to get some of these reductions in future years?
Yes, that's where that extra 110 or so megatons are going to come from. We really hadn't done very much to change the buildings from 2018 to 2023. I mean, the DPW building, the new one, is more efficient.
Yeah.
And so just this year, all these, we had the energy audit that just was turned in about a year ago, and with, you know, with Jim's help and, you know, we started to chip away at what are the energy efficiencies we can put in place. And so they've been in place, starting this year, and we did get CEC money to do like all the lighting conversions and so forth. So it just isn't reflected yet, because the data goes through 2023, and we just started to do these building improvements this year. So these building improvements, the energy management systems, the lighting and so forth, and the switchover from heating oil to natural gas in the next couple of years will show, you know, cost savings and the carbon reductions.
And I don't want to take time from my colleagues, but the energy management system, is that something that's more complex than just a thermostat?
Yes.
Can you sort of just describe, if you could just briefly comment, how you find relations with the school? Because I imagine there's probably a lot of savings with the school, but that's sort of out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things, schools would be part of a community plan, and when we did our community emissions reduction, their emissions are in the database but not segregated. So it's one thing that we want to work on, it's part of a community-wide kind of effort in the future is to, you know, find out, you know, how the school really measures up. The energy management systems, they're just more sophisticated ways to adjust the heating and cooling by the actual temperature in the building. Old-fashioned thermostats usually use an outdoor sensor, and it's kind of off and on. It's not very subtle, and it doesn't depend on occupancy or lights being on and all that kind of stuff. They're just very sophisticated. I will tell you that the, I convinced our cooperative to implement these energy management systems. This is our first winter that they're in all the buildings, but last year, they did an experiment in two comparison buildings where they showed that in three months, they saved $6,000 of heating oil. So, and we had thermostats, you know, we had all that kind of stuff, but they're, it's a different kind of sensor system that's more finely tuned, that ends up saving a lot more energy, making sure that, you know, things are turned down overnight appropriately, they're turned down, you know, when the buildings are empty, and, but it's also just the way they, the temperature is regulated to make sure it's comfortable for people. One of the things like, you know, that these old co-ops, people are running the air conditioners and opening their windows in the middle of the winter because it's too hot in some areas. So these energy management systems compensate for that, makes it more comfortable so that we're not wasting fuel.
Well, thanks again. Great, great report, just tremendous.
Carol, this is trustee Behrens. The Christ Church Bronxville, I don't know if you know that they're looking to do a geothermal for their whole facility, so that would obviously bode well if they could get that through.
Absolutely, and I, you know, I hope we can bring the faith communities together and have them talk and have them be an example. Some of those buildings are the biggest and oldest buildings in the community, and I know that Christ Church is, you know, has never been air conditioning, and that's, air conditioning, that's one of the things they're going to do. And, you know, one of the things I think the village will need to think about going forward is, you know, heat emergency centers, other kinds of emergency centers, and some of these buildings are going to, you know, might be ripe for that kind of emergency response. Hopefully, we don't have too many of them, but we know heat, heat is getting worse, and that's the, one of the biggest risks for us in terms of those heating degree days, and a lot of our older housing just doesn't have air conditioning, so.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Carol. Thanks a lot. All right, we move on to our village administrator, Jim Palmer's report.
Okay, not as exciting, I'll just zip through these. Just a reminder, once again, for property owners to clear their budding sidewalks and make them safe for pedestrians out there sending notices to people today and making phone calls, and for those that do clear their sidewalks, we appreciate that. Also, on-street parking overnight is prohibited during certain hours in the village, 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. When we issue a snow emergency, as we did on Saturday evening, the village does not entertain any parking requests that come in for parking on-street. So we ask that residents, again, as we always do, sign up for the email alerts, look at the emergency notifications on the website. The police department has been instructed to issue tickets for those that do park on-street, especially during the snow emergency, and they did issue tickets overnight on Saturday. Unfortunately, when cars leave their vehicles on-street, it makes it a real challenge to plow and to plow around the vehicles. There are plenty of locations that residents and their guests can park. So again, I look at these requests as they come into the police department in the evening hours and their guests of residents. So we need the residents to explain where they can park their vehicles, and if someone's not clear, they can, we do put that information on the website, or they can call Village Hall. Also, just wanted to mention Route 22, been getting, the village, the mayor mentioned this in our column, we continue to get complaints, I probably get at least two or three emails a week, two or three calls a week regarding the condition of State Route 22. It is a state road. The village probably almost every other month writes to our senator, our assemblywoman, to request that the Region Eight addressed the condition of that road. I documented it a couple of weeks ago, sent specific photographs to Region Eight, they went out and did temporary patching, which they have done. The patching lasts a short amount of time. For anyone listening, feel free to write to the New York State Department of Transportation. If you notice a pothole, you can report it to me. You can also report it to the state DOT online. We just need to continue to follow up with them. Unfortunately, that road is not even in their five-year capital plan to be repaved, and it's, unfortunately, yes, the temporary patch, the temporary patches, the temporary blacktop becomes loose, goes into the catch basins, which they've made us responsible for, and then into our conveyance system. So we will just continue to follow up with Senator Mayor and Assemblywoman Amy Paul. But again, State Route 22, not trying to pass the buck, but it is not a village road. The best I can do is immediately reach out to the regional director, and then they come out. Sad state of affairs, but that's what we have. Likewise, on village potholes, just so you know, the DPW does get, stand online with the one blacktop company that is open, and we do cold patch. So if there is a pothole, unfortunately, with all the salt that we're putting out and the freezing and the thawing, this is, those are just ripe conditions when water gets trapped in the blacktop, freezes, and then you get a thaw, you start to get heaving, and the process repeats. So we are out there filling potholes, I had the guys out there on Friday. We will continue to do so. You're welcome to send me an email if the location has not been addressed.
Crosswalk improvements on 22 and Pond Field, that's still, no movement or discussion on that?
So, so again, after 15 years, the mayor and I met with both Shelley and Amy, huh, it's already in 2023 when we met on-site with them, and once again followed up to make sure that it was going to be in the capital program for the, for the 25, 26 year, which we're now in. We just don't know where it's going to be, but it will be part of several dozen worth of projects to put pedestrian heads and crosswalks in. Unfortunately, the email that we got back from DOT earlier, and I guess it was late last year, stated that they didn't realize that they needed some easements for where they were going to be putting the handicap ramp and the ped buttons, which, again, they've been out there surveying, so it was.
And just so viewers know, you're talking primarily about the intersection of Pond Field and Route 22.
Correct.
Where we've been on the list for improvements for 15 years in county.
15 years. It's a natural location for what we say pedestrian heads, for pedestrian push buttons, walk, don't walk, because it is a signalized intersection. So, but yes, it's supposed to be in the pipeline to go out to bid where, if it's going to get constructed this year or in the 26th, we can't say, but it's periodic emails again. The last thing, I just want to make sure everyone knows, tomorrow, there is an election. Polling locations are on the, on the village website that'll take you to the county website, but it is the election, special election for the position of county executive. So the polling locations are the Bronxville, Bronxville School for three locations, and Christ Church, and also up at Iona. And I just mentioned Hamilton Drainage Project.
When it's 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., the traditional hours. And just as trustee Fredericks mentioned, the improvement, the improvements for the Hamilton Sussex neighborhoods that we've talked about for quite some time have been underway, and they have been working over the course of the last several weeks. Appreciate everyone's patience on that work. They're moving right along from location to location, adding those catch basins and working with the other utility sets.
Jim, what's the, what do you think the timing is for paving Pond Field and sort of around the new improvements?
Weather-dependent, but the goal is to get, to get the paving completed before the outdoor dining season begins. So again, it's.
Early March, early April.
Weather-dependent, but early April, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Palmer?
That's it.
Okay. Then we move on to approval of some minutes. I need a motion to approve minutes from an executive session, a work session, and a regular meeting, January 13, 2025.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then, Mr. Palmer, there's two resolutions, A and B, relating to taxes.
Right, first, just recognizing the current list of unpaid taxes for the 24, 25 year, and of course, as you know, this is just a snapshot of a certain point in time, which was probably about a week ago. So the office, the treasurer's office will continue to collect payments, there will be penalties, but.
And make calls.
And make calls, and they send emails, they are, Laurie and Kate are relentless. But the first resolution is to just recognize this statement of the outstanding taxes as of this point in time.
To our treasurer, is this a normal, like, looking back year to year, is this list that we have right now?
I don't remember from last year, but it's hard to gauge because it's like a 2 week difference.
2 weeks, okay, so, because there's.
You said today that already a lot of people have paid from this list, yeah.
Okay, so this.
It's down to about $1 million plus.
Okay. So nothing out of the ordinary is just my question, okay. So nothing out of the ordinary is just my question, okay. So would someone like to move to accept the list? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and the next item is just recognizing that the lien sale date is being held on March 13, 2025, here at Village Hall at 10 o'clock in the conference room.
Jim, could you just, I think it's helpful just to remind people what actually happens there?
Sure.
The processes that you go through.
Sure, so first off, again, the list that you currently have before you will get reduced probably to a handful of, handful of properties.
Of outstanding taxes.
Correct, literally down to a handful of properties. But at that point, the village has the opportunity, there are individuals, this notice is posted in the, in the local, in our official newspaper, and individuals have the opportunity to essentially purchase those outstanding taxes.
In an auction situation.
Yes, there may be
The interest is auctioned.
All right, then I just need a motion to authorize the lien sale for 2024.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and the, and the next item is just authorizing our OLA consultants for $9,700, $9,750 to be exact, to assist us with that process of converting our boiler here over to run on natural gas.
And we, we use them at the library, the OLA.
Yes, it is.
And we had a good experience with them at the library.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
They're also doing the work on
It is, and yes, they're engineering the solar installs. So this is a competitive price, given that they're here and working on multiple projects.
And we like them.
Yes.
Yep.
I'll move it.
All righty, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I just had a quick question. The, the contract that we did recently for Solar on the DPW, what's the status of that? When do we get a report or feasibility study on that?
The status is they're preparing the designs right now. And the project will go out to bid, they'll prepare the bid documents and go out to bid over the course of March. So we should have bid results by the end of March, beginning of April, or beginning of April.
Great, thanks.
This item, we've talked about with the, the improvements over at the library, between the village board and the library board, we wanted to improve accessibility to that rear patio area. So you're simply authorizing the award of extending the walkway out front and resetting some of the brick pavers for $28,400 to Landy Contracting, who was the low bidder. Right now, the walkway extends closer to Crow's Nest, and we're going to straighten the path and bring it right out to Pond Field where we have the handicap stalls.
And this meets all the ADA regulations, correct?
Yes, and with that, they're going to be resetting some of those pavers to reduce the slope going out to
That's what I thought, there was a little bit of a slope concern.
Remind people that Landy has done a lot of work in town.
Yes, yep, and again, he, yes, he's doing a lot of work. And I think, again, some economies of scale, he's already mobilized in the area. So, yes, he came in considerably less than, actually, the contractor who had, who won the award to do the patio previously. So we're pleased with that. And he has, Landy has skilled masons, this is the, anyway.
Yeah.
And this comes out of the village capital fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'll move it.
All righty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Quickly ask, how is, like, now that the patio is moving through its first winter, has it held up well in terms of the, you know, the construction, the paving, the benches, everything is in good order, there's, you know?
I think great.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry? Yeah.
Good.
It's good because it's been a cold, you know, winter with lots of snow and freezing and
Yes, strange weather patterns.
Yeah, as things settle in sometime, you know, so it's
Yeah, usually that first year when things are settling is a tricky year, so that's good to hear.
Yeah.
We might lose some landscaping, but again, we have a performance bond that we're holding for that, so. Yep. Okay, and the last resolution is just authorizing the additional funding that you had discussed for the senior citizen council, specifically for the Bronxville senior citizens' contribution to the senior citizens' council.
And Jim, you provided to us that Tuckahoe, the village in Tuckahoe provides 14,000, over 14,000 for their senior citizens. And we're bringing our number up from 6,000 to 10,000.
I'm sorry, from 4,000 to 10,000.
4,000, so by 6,000, yeah.
Increase to 6,000, correct, yeah.
Are we still giving them the parking space to raffle off?
No, part of the genesis for this request was they realized the amount of labor and the number of seniors that could sit outside and sell parking raffle tickets. It was an awful lot of labor for not a big return. And they asked essentially to hand back the parking space and have us consider a little more funding. And that's what, as you know, we talked about it in work session, so.
We've all discussed this, I think this is really very sensible because there's also a certain inefficiency to raffling off a parking space to a single person. Because how often does a single person use a parking space? So give them the money, but then we'll actually get the revenue from the parking.
We'll get the parking space back, and they will get the revenue without such labor-intensive efforts. That was part of this. All right, I will move it then, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And I think we have one more, correct?
Yes, the other one's just recognizing a, authorizing us to consider this 2016 police vehicle Ford Explorer as surplus so we can put it out on auction. Chief was going back and forth, do we keep it, do we not keep it? And frankly, it's, it's been sitting there and a lot, and it's just too costly to repair again, so.
Jim, when we buy, when we buy a car, what's the expected useful life of that car?
For at least three years.
Sure.
It's three years.
Three years, okay, so getting eight, getting eight or nine out of this.
And we keep it longer than that, but Lori's referring to what, what
For the financing purposes.
What the finance, what they recognize as. But yes, we, truth be told, and what we usually do often with, we only need so many vehicles, but we, we pass down a parking, one of the police vehicles to the parking enforcement office.
And Lori, I take it that that three years, I mean, that's obviously shorter than it might be for an ordinary residential user. But that's because basically the police vehicles are almost in constant use.
That is true, I don't require it by New York Health and Parks.
Okay.
Okay, so that's regulated the three years, okay. All right, would you like to move it?
I'll move that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Before I open it for any comment from the public, trustees, Jim, did we miss anything?
No.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Jim, I understand that you and the chief looked at the situation on Hobart Road because there'd been an unfortunate accident with, you know, vehicles skidding down the hill. And I understand that there's going to be some increased signage and maybe some additional restricted usage at Hobart?
Yes, right now, right now, some uniform traffic control device signs have been ordered and will be installed. And, but yes, something that the chief and I are looking at to recommend to you would be potentially narrowing the bottom of the road to make that a little bit safer, perhaps. Still allowing a left and right turn, but being able to narrow it since it is one-way to potentially add, potentially add some additional curving to provide a little bit of buffer. And in the meantime, we have one resident that lives on that road, and they've been, I've been trying to keep them informed of when we close the road and when we reopen it. It's been a very rough couple of weeks, but they're, but they're quite nice. But when the road is closed, it is a challenge because they Right, a delivery vehicle didn't go down and miss them the other day and then came back. So appreciate their patience and understanding. But, but yes, also recognize the concerns for the residents at the bottom of the hills, so. Work in progress. Hope the only thing I should mention also is, it just should be on our calendar, but next Monday, we will be closed on Observis and President's Day. So village offices will be closed and no sanitation collection.
And our next meeting is?
May, March 10.
March 10.
March 10. All right, this is open, anyone in the audience? Yes, sir, you've been so patient. If you would just tell us your name and address, that would help.
Yes, my name is Lee Huang, I live in Midland Gardens.
Okay.
So I wasn't actually going to say anything this evening. I've lived in Bronxville for about 10 years. But because of stories, and because the leaders of the library and Chamber of Commerce are here, I did want to share a quick story, which I think is a little bit interesting. As a quick background, yeah, my wife and I and son, who's now in college, we've lived here for 10 years. I was on the NTC, I managed the website for the Historical Conservancy and the Veterans Group for several years a little while back. My wife works at Grand Canyon Village. But my son is in college right now, so he went through fourth grade through, you know, through high school, loved it, awesome. But when he was 11 years old, in raising him, I always wanted him to have like an entrepreneurial spirit and to explore things. And so when he was 11, he, I asked him, like, what business might you want to build on your own? He came up with an idea to build, to create a Lego building business. And he called it Bronxville Bricks. And the reason was because so many kids, as we all know, they get big Lego sets, but they don't have time to build it, the parents, grandparents, no one's got time, so the boxes just sit there unopened. So he's like, I will provide a service to, to build Lego sets. So as he was going through that process, I said, hey, how are you going to reach customers? And he said that the library has, I think at that time, maybe a once-a-month Lego afternoon in the main room. And I'm like, well, that's your target customer, right? There are probably kids and parents there. So he went there with his flyer in hand, very nervous. But he went up to everybody and handed out flyers, introduced himself, so that got him going. And then fast forward a few years after that, he started a website consulting firm where he designed websites for companies. This is probably about 14. And during COVID, he just had a lot of clients, but he had already gotten the volunteering spirit. You know, we talked about how all the businesses were, you know, having tough times. So he contacted the Chamber of Commerce and said that he would offer all of his design and marketing services for free to all of the small businesses in town. And the Chamber of Commerce was very supportive and then blasted out flyers and emails saying if you need help with anything that's like digital, contact Connor and he'll help. So he helped The Silk Road, Tony Tony, a bunch of others. But it was really because of the support of the library and the Chamber of Commerce that he really got those experiences that have now translated into being a good kid, you know, successful in college. But again, I thought that was really just a unique sort of success story of the town, so.
Yeah, that's
Just wanted to share that and, and thanks.
What a nice way to, you, anyone else want to stand and talk about anything? Well, then that's a wonderful way to conclude our February meeting, so. And congratulations to Connor.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yes, all right, do I have a motion to close our meeting?
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See you on the 10. Whoa.